Mr. Chairman, you are live.
Okay, just one more. Are you ready? Okay, we will call the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I'll take a quick roll call. Supervisor Day.
Here.
Supervisor Ayers.
Here.
Supervisor Lyon.
Yeah.
And Supervisor McDaniel is here. Supervisor Lewis is in Richmond, attending the Legislative Section. We will now have a prayer for the board filed by pleasure, allegiance. Those attending are not required to participate, but if you'd like to join us, please stand.
Dear Father, we come to you tonight asking for your blessings on our community. We ask for patience, knowledge, and grace as we deal with issues within our community. Please lead, guide, and direct us on our decisions and bless our community and our citizens. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for the liberty and justice for all.
While we check and make sure we are live, if we get somebody email that we do not, I do see Brandy Flint on there, so I can check with her.
Says the Zoom link on the website has disappeared.
We're live. It's the Zoom. Or somebody's trying to go up here.
If this may be done to the agenda, the board document is up to the agenda. Is that, was it citizen having?
Yeah.
That's what it is. You have to click on the agenda and then you get the information.
Okay, we are.
We're good to proceed. We will hold citizen comments near the beginning of the meeting. I would do our best to take citizens' comments remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial in the one that numbers listed on the county website. The web and our ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact and do so in Rockfish County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise your hand button at the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. Any changes to the agenda tonight?
No, sir. There is, there is one that's coming off, and that's the solid waste hauling contract, pushing that off to the next meeting.
What about the Speedway?
Oh, well, the Speedway is not on the agenda.
Okay, so it was supposed to be, correct?
Yes, correct. The annual report from Metro Bridge Speedway is typically on this agenda. We did not receive the the final report in time to put it on the agenda. So I've tried to let, and Mr. Sladen has tried to let those who are interested in that know that it will hopefully be on the February thirteenth agenda.
Okay. Recognizations and presentations. Tonight, we have a proclamation honoring in honor and memory of Ronnie Campbell. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Rockfish County and its citizens lost a dedicated public servant with the passing of Ronnie Campbell on December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. And whereas through a native of Augusta County, Mr. Campbell made Rockfish County home. And whereas Mr. Campbell earned his undergraduate degree in criminal justice from East Tennessee State University and his master's degree in risk management from Virginia Commonwealth University. And whereas Mr. Campbell proudly served the Commonwealth as an officer of Virginia State Police, retiring at the rank of Master Trooper in two thousand and one. And whereas Mr. Campbell served on Rockfish County School Board from nineteen ninety-six through two thousand and six and was elected by his peers in terms as both vice chair and chair. And whereas during his service on the school board, Mr. Campbell was integral in revitalization and modernization of the county educational facilities and school safety and security, and was a staunch advocate for faculty and staff. And whereas Mr. Campbell was elected as South River District Representative on the Board of Supervisors in November two thousand and eleven, serving twice as chair until his eventual election to the Virginia House of Delegates in November of two thousand and eighteen, where he served until his passing in two thousand and twenty. And whereas during his service on the board, Mr. Campbell was instrumental in many important and lasting initiatives, including but not limited to enacting the county's first mission, vision, and value statements, and economic development incentive policy, developing a long-term solid waste management solution, and establishing the Blue Ridge Resource Authority, implementing the Rockbridge Area Network Authority, fostering greatly needed improvements to regional emergency communications to include both a regional radio system and nine-one-one center, and developing affordable housing at Greenhouse Village. And whereas Mr. Campbell demonstrated his dedication to county staff in both word and deed, working with his fellow board members to implement staff appreciation and recognition programs, wage and benefit studies, and subsequent adjustments, and was a frequent visitor to the county offices, often bearing produce from his garden. And whereas during his time serving Rockfish County as a member of the school board, Board of Supervisors, and Virginia House of Delegates, Mr. Campbell took care to always be accessible to those he was elected to represent. And whereas Mr. Campbell will be greatly missed by all those whose lives he has touched. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Rockfish County Board of Supervisors respectfully honors the life and memory of our fellow citizen and expresses sincere sympathy and condolences to its entire family during this time of great personal loss, and be it further proclaimed that we express on behalf of the citizens of Rockfish County deep appreciation and gratitude for the gifts of time, ability, and commitment given by Ronnie Campbell to the county of Rockbridge and its citizens, adopted this twenty-third day of January, two thousand and twenty-three. Yeah, all right. Is there a motion to accept the?
So move.
Motion in a second. All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day, Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well.
I would like to note as well that we had planned to do this at the first January meeting, is the first available meeting after Mr. Campbell's passing, but it was the day before the election. As you know, his wife Ellen was running, and so we, we're hoping to get her here tonight, but she is in Richmond representing the county. And expressed her thanks to the board.
Okay, at this time, we will take citizen comments. Anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anyone online wishing to address the board?
There is not, but I have been made aware that potentially the link to join the Zoom meeting, it's being recorded, so somebody can see it, but we're working on the link to join the meeting. So if there, we get that link fixed, I would ask that if there are citizen comments toward, more toward the end of the meeting that we provide opportunity for that after we get it fixed.
All right, is anyone in the room that didn't have an opportunity to sign up wishing to address the board? All right, next up, we have approval of the January ninth, twenty-twenty-three minutes. Has anyone had a chance to review those or any questions, concerns, comments? Not as their motion to approve is presented? So move. And second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well. Next, we have the consideration of the school appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, sir. We have for total fund fifty, school operations fund, forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars in new grants. And for fund seventy, the school construction fund, it is a total of pardon.
Two point eight million.
Do you want my hard copy?
Lose it?
Here you go. Aren't you glad I print these things up?
We. There is a total of two million, eight hundred thousand for our total fund seventy. And again, that's the school construction fund. So total appropriations is two million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars.
Any questions, comments, concerns, questions to approve?
Thank you.
Too much.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well. And next up, we have the resolution approving, applying for a literary loan for the Floyd S.K. project, Mr. Harrison.
Yes, and we have RT available. Any chance of Zoom?
I'm here. Or we've got RT Taylor with us.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening. How are you?
Hold on just a second.
Okay.
Let's give that a shot. Go ahead, RT.
Okay, for some reason, it's not letting me share my video. Bear with me just one second. That's all right.
RT, they do have. They do have.
What's that?
They do have hard copies.
Okay. Sorry, I can't show my face. I apologize, but hopefully y'all can hear me loud and clear.
RT.
What you have in front of you this evening is a.
RT, try it now, please. I made you a cup. And for all those in attendance, we're usually a little bit better than this.
Um. I can share my screen. I just didn't know if y'all wanted to be able to see my face. I apologize. I can't. For some reason, it won't. Okay, can y'all see my screen?
Yes, sir. I want to zoom in a little bit.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay. So what you have in front of you this evening, I'm gonna start. I think I'm gonna drag over the resolution just real quickly. The resolution you have for consideration this evening that was provided to you all through the efforts of Daniel Laro and your county attorney, Vicki. This is for purposes of proceeding with the Floyd S.K. Technical Education Center project for an amount up to nine million dollars. The reason why you have this in front of you this evening is twofold. Number one, we're looking at keeping our options on the table, so to speak, for two potential funding programs. The first program is the old lit loan fund that everybody's probably aware of over the past a couple decades that has been revamped and is actually in the process of being revamped. So all the details have not been finalized by the state yet. We are still waiting to hear more on that. And then the other part is we are going to apply, like we typically do, to the Virginia Public School Authority. They have their spring pool program. So what we like to say is we're dual tracking your funding options through both of those programs. This resolution is authorizing y'all to make application to the literary fund, okay? The application deadline is February tenth. The school board has already taken action to approve making application to the lit loan program. And now it's the county's turn to potentially make the same resolution to make application to the lit loan program. This does not obligate you to proceed with the literary loan program. In fact, the details are evolving such that we may not know until, call it late March, if the county were to be approved for the lit loan program, which is another reason we are dual tracking this with the VPSA spring pool program, okay? So, so the upshot here for this evening, for your consideration, is would you like to make an application to the lit loan program on or before February tenth? We are planning to coordinate amongst the county and school staff and Davenport and Bond Council and your county attorney by February ninth so that we can all review the application together, make sure it's all buttoned up before we submit the following day. Any, I've been talking a lot. Let me stop there for just any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Taylor, this, the nine million just sits the ceiling for our borrowing capacity, correct?
That, that's correct. Yes, sir.
So if, if the final bid or whatnot comes in at seven million or whatnot, we, you know, certainly we, we can go with the lower amount.
That's right. So to answer your question, we will not borrow any more than is necessary to fund the project. And to the extent, for whatever reason, it goes above nine million dollars, we'd have to come back to the board for approval. But this, we feel with staff's input from both the county and school side, is a good number, a good estimate that should cover what we need it for.
All right.
Okay.
Wait a minute for it. Given that this does not obligate Rockfish County to debt, and I would like to make a motion to pass or adopt the resolution authorizing applying for the literary law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All right, Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well.
If, if you'll, if you'll bear with me for just another minute or two, I'd like to just talk through the schedule of events to follow this meeting, leading up to when the boards, both the county and school boards would be asked to make a decision at certain points. You all have a printed copy of the current financing schedule in front of you, I believe. I've also showed it up on here on the screen, if you can still see my screen. Again, tonight, January twenty-third, as y'all just did, adopting the resolution to keep the Virginia Lit Loan Program, at least as an option for now, on the table. We'll all get together at the staff level and Davenport and the attorneys. We'll get together by February ninth to make sure we've got the application in good stead and be prepared to submit that on February tenth to the, to the state. What you will be seeing in, in the newspaper for the first notice of public hearing will be on February twenty-second, according to Bond Council. That's when those, that's when the first notice would have to run ahead of your March thirteenth board meeting. We will be sharing with you, like we did with Finance Committee back in the fall. It was November twenty-eighth, I believe. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's Monday, November twenty-eight. And we presented an overview, a pretty comprehensive analysis of the projects to be funded, to give some perspectives, and we'll be back to the full board at the February twenty-seventh meeting to provide a detailed update and talk through our options with respect to the funding mechanism, what the current market rates are, as well as any potential impacts. March first, you'll see in the paper another, your second notice of public hearing. And then I'm gonna skip to March thirteenth real quickly. March thirteenth would be that county board meeting at which you all would hold a public hearing. And at that meeting, the county board would consider approving a resolution authorizing the potential lit loan program issuance. And with that said, we may not know. It might be into the April timeframe where the state determines whether or not Rockbridge County will be able to participate, okay? In the lit loan, if you, if you were approved and eligible for the lit loan program. So we'll have to play that by ear, but we will certainly give you an update by February twenty-seventh of what we know. And then once again, when we present on March thirteenth, we'll be able to give you an update of that as well. So let's slide past the lit loan program for just a minute. Again, you'll have to do public hearing notices for the VPSA approach. And just so y'all are aware, we're running one, excuse me, we're running the same public notice of public hearing. It's in the aggregate. So according to our attorney's guidance, they're telling us that we can run with one public hearing that covers either or both a lit loan issuance and a VPSA pool issuance, just so that there's no confusion and people think we're trying to fund two different projects. It's just about one project, and we may go with one funding mechanism over the other, okay? And then lastly, with respect to the VPSA key dates here, I'm gonna scroll down a little bit further. Again, the, the sort of drop dead date, if you will, would be March thirteenth for us to figure out if we're in the pool or not. If we need a little extra time, let's say that the lit loan program, folks haven't let us know, and we need a little bit more time to say yay or nay to the VPSA pool or the lit loan. We absolutely have to have a meeting. It might even have to be a college or special meeting by early April, April fifth or April sixth, in order to meet the VPSA deadline, okay? If we continue to proceed with VPSA, if for whatever reason the lit loan program is not approved for us, then we would have our, they will have their bond sale this spring in mid to late April. We would close by mid-May, and your funds to spend on the project would be available in mid-May when we close. And I believe Spencer Ashton can correct me. That's sort of the timeline that we've been talking about all along, in order to stay on track with getting the renovations all completed on a, on a specific timeline so that the school opens up at the appropriate time.
That's correct.
Any question on that schedule?
Not a, not a question, just a comment. When you, when you come back to the supervisors to discuss the different programs and all, the, the main issue that I'm looking for is how this debt payment fits into our debt schedule. So if you could have that information, because I know the schools have some debt that is coming off, that's being paid off, and how this new payment will fit into that to limit the impact on our citizens.
Yeah, yes, sir. Absolutely. That's what I was referring to earlier about what we shared with finance, your finance committee in, at the November twenty-eighth meeting. We're gonna be refreshing that analysis and fine tuning it for the full board's purposes.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Is there anything else you have to present us tonight?
No, sir. I just want to thank you all for your time this evening in letting us present. So thank you very much. We appreciate it, as always.
Thank you for your help with this project.
Yes, sir. You all have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
If you could stop sharing.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have consideration of the performance agreement for extension of Virginia Horse Center. Mr. Suter.
Yes, this, this item was introduced to the board at your second November meeting. As such, it was reviewed pretty lengthily at that meeting. I'll not review it again in detail unless there are questions, but in a nutshell, the Virginia Horse Center and by extension, the local economy has greatly benefited, benefited from the dedication of an additional one percent transient occupancy tax established by the board in Lexington City Council back in two thousand and fourteen. These, these funds have been used to complete greatly needed capital maintenance projects at the Horse Center. And the request of the board, the request to the board, the EDA, and also the city of Lexington, is to extend the dedication of those funds through two thousand and twenty-nine to help level out their debt service obligation and avoid a six hundred and nine thousand dollar balloon payment in two thousand and twenty-four. Given conservative, conservative rest, revenue estimates, this would, this would fully retire the debt at that time and smooth out the, the debt service payments. The EDA unanimously approved this request last Monday, and Lexington will be considering it at their next meeting, is my understanding. And, and in your package, of course, are a number of documents, a fairly large number of documents referenced in the board report that show the history and purpose of the plan. And those are, they're basically for your use and history and also that of the, the general public. So Virginia Horse Center CEO Glenn Petty and CFO Sandra Thomas are with us this evening to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions by the board, concerns? Is there a motion to approve? So move in a second.
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well. Thank you, the Horse Center. Next up, we have consideration, consideration of a deed of dedication for the streets and the meadows of Woods Creek Phase Four. Ms. Hougham?
Chairman, members of the board, Chris Sladen and I have been working together on this project. The medicine would, Woods Creek Phase Four was developed by King Fisher Land LLC. When the subdivision was created, they recorded the plat and retained the roads in this portion of the subdivision as private roads. The developer has now requested that VDOT accept the roads for state maintenance. And so in order for that to happen, they had to dedicate the roads to the county. So your first item related to this is to adopt the proposed resolution authorizing acceptance of the dedication of those three portions of road, McKendry Place, Farmington Port, and Woods Edge Drive.
Any questions from us? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well.
The second item then is to adopt a resolution requesting that VDOT accept these roads into the state secondary system. They have already been inspected and approved for acceptance, and it's just a matter of, of the board requesting that acceptance.
Any questions from us? Not as a motion to approve?
Yes.
In a second? All right, Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
And Chair Verge just as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, let's see, we're delaying the solid waste and recycling, correct?
Correct.
All right. Next up, we have the potential twenty-four seven fire rescue staffing, Chief Ramsey.
Chairman, members of the board, um, just coming back. Again, just to, just to do a quick recap of the proposal uh, that was presented last, uh, last meeting on January ninth is that the, uh, we would continue our twelve hour staffing as normal, uh, Fairfield and Glasgow, six A to six P, seven days a week. Transition to a twenty-four hour staffing schedule for our Cars Creek uh, shift, uh, that they would spend the first twelve hours at Cars Creek Firehouse continuing as normal operations and then at eighteen hundred or, or six PM would come back to our office and staff, uh, county ambulants, uh, at nighttime there. And while they're there, uh, the goal is to handle uh, the second calls of failed response, uh, if, if there are any or, or second calls. All second calls to Glasgow that would eliminate some of the concern of Lexington, you know, this the answering those calls at nighttime and take some of the burden off, off of our neighboring jurisdictions. And also to, to be there to, uh, assist with second calls and failed response countywide as needed. And then the other part, uh, to that would be, uh, along with this proposal was that, um, should, uh, the, the Glasgow lifesaving crew, uh, reach a fifteen percent failed to respond at nighttime, that we would have conversations and consider a couple of things. One, depending on what the situation would be is to, to assisting them with moving the staff uh, in the south end, or as we talked about, if someone became ill or unable to function for a short period of time, that we would be able to assist them and, uh, essentially be a safety net, uh, for the rescue squad. I did update the uh, potential impacts for FY twenty-three, as we talked about last, last meeting. And one of the directions was, uh, to meet with the finance committee, uh, Mr. Harrison. After the last meeting, which, which we have done that. And, uh, Mr. Harrison does have a, a plan, uh, that would not impact any, any future appropriations and the finance committee approved to, uh, to bring that forward to, to the board tonight.
Just to add on that, the, the, um, it's a, it's a, for this year. You know, the, the one-time cost, the estimated, uh, cost is a hundred and roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Um, so not all that would be, not all, that would be the one-time cost, but only a portion of that would be this fiscal year. And we've got a way to cover that this fiscal year. We need to budget for it in future years. The annual ongoing cost would be about a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
And finance committee reviewed.
Right, we reviewed the, the, uh, the money for the remainder of the year is already within the budget due to some excess revenues that we've, we had. So there's no need to appropriate anything. Correct me if I'm wrong.
That's correct.
And, uh, we have it, uh, to be a budget item for next year.
The only, the only question that I have is, you know, the fifteen percent. Uh, again, I, I, I just believe that needs not necessarily be a one month, but a tracking over a three-month trend analysis, uh, for that six PM to six AM.
For, yeah, for the nighttime.
Yeah. That and the, uh.
Talk about the failed response.
Yes. Before we move them somewhere, I mean, I, I think you need to clearly understand what the reasoning is for it.
I think it's important. Note, our goal is not, not to move them and we're gonna do everything possible to work with them to ensure that response times are what they need and it's not an I got you moment.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes you can, something can happen and then, and it might be a reason for it and we're not gonna just say, oh, sorry, it's fifteen percent.
Yeah.
And I, I think one of the discussions we had too is the goal, the goal was if we had a, and, and Chief Ramsey touched on this. If we had a short, short period of time where it was known that they were gonna be short-staffed, then, as you mentioned in the last meeting, good communication all the way around, all the time. Being able to shift staff where they need to be for that period and then shift back. But I think what you're talking about is a more of a more permanent move. Just one month of fifteen percent failed to respond would not necessarily trigger a permanent move. But if they needed some help for a short period, then we'd work on that.
Cause I think it can be beneficial throughout the county. I mean, you know, Fairfield may have an issue where they need some help or Goshen or, or whatnot. And was there any other discussion about running interstate calls?
We did not, uh, discuss that, uh, since the last board meeting. We, we will look into that and, and see how, I have not talked with Chief Dickerson as far as first do. Understanding that would be, uh, that would be the second, second responding agency there should, should an incident require two amelances, but we can certainly look at that and, and move forward on that as well. The one thing that, you know, uh, something new like this and making sure that we have good data moving forward, I think it's something that we can maneuver around as we go, but also with, with the consideration of possibly, you know, assisting another agency sometime with staffing, it's gonna be very difficult to create a first do run area or, or be in the first, first response, you know, to a certain area and then, you know, have, have to move back, but we can certainly, we'll keep an eye on that and I'll, I'll talk with Chief Dickerson on that and, and why, maybe it's something that while we're staffed, we could, we can certainly do that as well.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Chief Ramsey?
Oh, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
There a motion to approve?
So moved.
In a second? All right. Ms. Ayers.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons.
Yes.
Mr. Day.
Yes.
And Chair Verge, yes, as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ramsey. All right, it's past six o'clock. I'm sorry, we're a little late on public hearings. Uh, we'll move to item fourteen. Tara and Patrick Warner, three eighty-two Pageant Hill Road, Lexington, Virginia. Application for a special exception permit, commercial kennel and agricultural general uses A two zoning district. Mr. Sladen?
Yes, bear with me. I'm gonna share my screen. I do not have formal PowerPoint presentations for y'all this evening. I apologize. Uh, we're gonna utilize the GIS in this case. Uh, Tara and Patrick Warner, uh, in attendance this evening, three eighty-two Pageant Hill Road, Natural Bridge, Virginia, have made an application for a special exception permit in order to operate a commercial kennel. The breeding operation is currently in operation. The purpose of this application is for the kennel to be in compliance with zoning. The properties identified in Magenta here, uh, located at three eighty-two Pageant Hill Road are located in the agricultural and general use district A two per section six oh three point oh three dash five of the county of land development regulations. A commercial kennel is a use by special exception in the A two zoning district. Property is located on the west side of Pageant Hill Road, further identified as six, uh, ninety, approximately one point four miles north of the intersection of Pageant Hill Road and Red Clover Lane. Red Clover Lane is further identified as six, excuse me, Route, uh, eight forty-nine. Further identified as tax maps number ninety-five dash five dash D five and ninety-five dash five dash C six. The property total consists between the two property, the property total consists of thirty-one point two four one acres per tax records. On January the eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, the planning commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of the special exception application with the following conditions. Number one, substantial compliance with the development plan prepared by the applicant titled Patrick and Tara Warner Track dated December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. That plan was included in your package. Number two, uh, breeding limited to poodles, small and standard, golden retrievers, comma, golden doodles, burbeast mountain dogs, burna doodles, cavalier, king charles spaniels, cavapoo's, old English sheepdogs, sheepa doodles, and double doodles. Number three, limited to fifteen females and five male dogs for breeding, which, uh, shall include any visiting stud dogs. And number four, uh, final condition, draft condition is boarding and grooming operations shall be prohibited. With that, I'd like, like to turn the floor over to Patrick and, uh, Tara Warner to review the details of our application and answer any questions on board behalf. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen, but if needed, we can certainly bring it back up.
Appreciate y'all. Um, any questions or, yeah, I think, uh, happy to answer anything you guys have to learn more about the business or have to talk a little bit about it if you'd like to hear a little bit more about it, but.
Thank you. I was impressed with the application. How many puppies would you have on site at a time?
Well, it varies depending on how many females.
Right.
You know, they cycle every six months. Um, so we try not to have two new litters at one time so we can manage it properly. Uh, but, you know, you can have three litters at a one time, you know, a small litter and a large litter.
And, and you keep a puppy for how long?
Uh, so for us, like for us, we raise a puppy and then we retire, uh, four years old.
Right, but I was reading you, you do that training.
Yes, obviously. Well, hopefully by eight weeks.
Right, okay.
That's the goal, yeah.
So. So I, I, I didn't get a sense. How many litters, how many litters did you have last year?
Okay, so, um, we probably had fifty to sixty puppies. It depends on how many puppies are in each litter. They're always very different.
Yeah, just, just a general, did five, six?
Six to eight litters.
Okay, so not real big litters. You, I guess it all depends. Do you have fourteen puppy litters or anything like that?
We might have had a thirteen.
Yeah.
Sheepdog's.
Like our cavapoo's are five in a litter.
Okay. So how many dogs, adult dogs do you keep?
We have fifteen dogs that are in our program, sixteen, including a neutered male, but.
Sure. My dog, my office dog.
That's fifteen. And that's not including, um, females that are ready to breed. That's just including all of them together. So they will retire the older females and then we have three males.
Because the, the breeding female is, ones that you keep is considered a breeding female after four months.
Uh, yeah, so, okay, well, then fifteen, or we have twelve females and, uh, three males.
Uh, and I don't know, Chris? Uh, because in the last application, that was part of it, we designated, we gave a certain age when those kept animals are considered breeding females. In the last time we did that, we were very clear about that in the last application.
I do not have that readily available. Uh, this is based on a previous, I, we, at the same time, that last one you're referring to, I think we had two dueling applications with the same family and this mirrors one of those, uh, applications. I do, I, of course, I think you're correct, and I think the other application did specify.
So, so what we, what you need to have, I, I feel you need to have a, the age of breeding female in here so that that's kept in the tally, that's counted.
Bervidge originally.
Yeah.
I think it was either.
I don't remember that.
We, we did four month, we did four, we considered a, a, an animal part of your, at four months is what we did on the last one. So is that an issue with you if we make sure that that's in here?
No, that's.
Okay, so, so that would be then kept. So what happens to, you retire them at four months? I mean, four years, four years, for, about four years is your average?
Yes.
And, and what happens to the animals when they're retired?
So, um, we, we haven't had a lot of dogs that retire. But, uh, so they typically go with a family, uh, family and friends or had one female that retired. She only had one litter. She just wasn't working, it didn't work out well. Um, so she retired with the family that owns one of our puppies. So we are very close contact. So somewhere we felt like we had an attachment. If we have retired them, um, it's really important. We love them very much. We want to make sure that we get updates all the time and see them living, you know, a wonderful life.
Okay, good. And, and that is in these applications. I, I hope you appreciate that. My biggest concern is these dogs do have a life and it, it's, so I, I have checked, um, sort of uh, with Mr. Sladen and, and got good reports that things, things look good over there. My other, uh, I talked to Mr. Weitzel. Uh, my other i- is, uh, and he said that he could catch you all up in the years that you were in, that you were in business. So, and he had great faith that you would take care of that and that you all would work out something to make sure the, the taxes and the licenses were up to date.
Yes.
Um, let's see, what other? Oh, and the other one, in your contract, I'm also concerned about dogs that end up not, you probably, I've had a couple of litters myself. I know that occasionally a puppy goes off and the, it's not the home that you had hoped for. So tell me what happens when those puppies, do those puppies come back to you?
Yep, uh, first letter refusal on all of our puppies. Yeah, we take that very seriously, that none of our puppies will ever be in a, in a, you know, in a shelter situation. So our dog, our puppies have strict contracts that say, uh, we do stay and neuter contracts and we also do the first letter refusal. So that will, they would come back to us and move rehome. We've had that happen twice and it was a very quick turnaround. In fact, I don't, that the two times it did happen, um, the, the dog didn't come back to us. I was able to rehome it from the families.
And, and that's fine, but what, I don't want to see our county and our SPCA or whatever having no, no pressure. So as long as, as we can depend on you to take care of all animals that come back to you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All righty, that, I think that's it for me.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Sir, at this time, we will, uh, open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up wishing to address the board?
Uh, and Ms. Anne Rustic.
Please state your name, measure of district.
My name is Anne Rustic and I'm from the Buffalo District. And I understand some of these issues may have already been discussed, but I would just like to repeat them if I may. I live approximately a quarter mile from the Pageant Hill pups. Planning Commission has approved a special exception for the owners contingent on specific restrictions. However, there is also approval for a limited expansion of the number of dogs allowed on the property at any given time. I understand the last meeting, it was originally they asked for ten breeding females and the planning commission decided to, um, up that to fifteen. Um, Pageant Hill pups has been an operational puppy breeding business since two thousand nineteen, according to their Facebook page. Twenty twenty, Pageant Hill pups produced sixty-five puppies from January third to December twenty-second. Twenty twenty-one, Facebook page shows pictures of nine litters between March twentieth and December nineteenth. Not all those litters were numbered, but there were a total of forty-five puppies that I counted. Twenty twenty-two, the number of puppies totaled sixty-seven. Totals for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two totaled a hundred and seventy-seven puppies on the Facebook page alone. They've been operating without a valid business license in Rockbridge County for three years, even though Tara Warner stood before the planning commission and stated that her excuse for operating without a license, but she considered herself to be a hobby breeder, do not consider a hundred and seventy-seven puppies to be a hobby. Uh, she also states on her website that she was raised in Florida in a dog breeding family, yet somehow she had no knowledge that a business license was required to sell a hundred and seventy-seven puppies. I sent an email to the planning commissioner suggesting that Pageant Hill pups had probably sold hundreds of puppies. Mr. Warner denied that number stating that he and his wife could not manage that many puppies by themselves. However, Tara Warner has advertiseded for kennel help on her personal Facebook page and another neighbor used her personal Facebook page to assist Tara in attaining that help. Based on the Warner's lack of knowledge or adherence to county business regulations and reluctance to acknowledge how many puppies they breed while in non-compliance, I have no confidence in their future plans for this business. I urge the supervisors to limit Pageant Hill pup to the original ten female breeding dogs and five stud dogs that was discussed at the planning commission and not allow for an additional five dogs if needed. I also support the non-boarding kennel clause suggested as well as other restrictions. Feel these restrictions are necessary to ensure that any future owners of this property would be restricted to a breeding operation no larger than the current one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else signed up?
Uh, no one else has signed up.
Is there anyone online wishing to address the board?
Uh, no one has their hand raised.
Is there anyone in present that didn't have an opportunity to sign up? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing, open it up for discussion.
It, it is true that from what I understand that the original, what was asked was ten females, ten females and five males was the original application. Is that, is that, okay, I.
You need to, can you please come speak into my? For the record, it's recorded.
Yeah, it's all right.
Uh, so now I explained in the meeting last time it was recorded that we would like to have a fifteen for females and five for males. That gives me some wiggle room. So, uh, so for example, right now, we have four females that are gonna retire within the next six months. And so that number is that we have twelve females right now. The number's gonna drop by four. But I also need to raise younger dogs that will be older than sixteen weeks. So I need a little bit of wiggle room.
Okay, I, that, that's clear. I, I'm, I'm sorry, I misspoke about the ten females. So, um, Chris, then the four feet, are, are am I clear that the, are you comfortable with putting that sixteen week clause in there? So, and, and the fifteen, the?
If you could clarify for the conditions, we can.
If you could clarify for the conditions that we can.
Well, I, personally, I'm comfortable with doing what we had done with the last applicant where we considered breeding females, anything over sixteen weeks. Just so, that gives you time to, to place puppies in case it doesn't all happen at eight weeks.
Correct. We also do genetic testing and health testing to make sure that they are breeding quality. Um, I can't really do hip testing by then, but I mean, I'm okay keeping that number.
Yes, I, I understand that. The um, the other issue that I, that I think was brought up was that the licensing and the tax issues, which I, I feel.
Hire a accountant.
Yeah, I feel, I feel comfortable that you, that, that between you and Mr. Weitzel, you will take care of the past three years of, of what is due to the county. Um, and then the other, the only other thing I'd forgotten to ask, and it, it looks to me like you have ample room not to inflict any barking to dogs on your, on your neighbors.
The way it's set, right where the kennel is, is all wooded behind and, and we are very close with our neighbors. Anne does live down the street, she's a buddy neighbor. Um, and we always reach out, hey, you know, if you ever hear anything or any concerns, let us know. They love us. There's never been an issue. I, I see them walking, walk on the street. We see each other all the time. Um, and we also have it where, you know, there's no, you cannot, you're, these dogs are inside at night. No, no one's outside. We are very mindful of barking and, and our neighbors. We love them very much. So, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So is that a motion to approve with the addition of the sixteen weeks?
Um, it is.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, uh, Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
First lines?
Yes.
Mr. Day? And Chair Vosius as well?
And for the record, it's limited to fifteen females in parentheses, over six, sixteen weeks of age and five male dogs for breeding. Is that, is that correctly worded?
The over sixteen weeks needs to count towards the fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Or the, or the five, if it happens to be a male, I guess it's, it's the five. See what I mean?
So that would pertain to female dogs and male dogs?
Correct, because the, yes.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. All right, next up, we have uh Daniel and John Mays, Alon Gilmore's Mill Road, Natural Station, Virginia. Application for a special exception permit campground, private seasonal camp in the agricultural and general uses A two zoning district. Mr. Sladen?
Yes, bear with me here. I'm gonna share my screen again. Uh, while this is uh searching, bear with me. Uh, Daniel B. and John T. Mays', uh, mailing address is six thirty, excuse me, six fifty-three Low Street, Buchanan, Virginia, two four zero six six, have made an application. Uh, have made an application for a special exception permit to operate a campground slash private seasonal camp. The property is located. Sorry, might just have to do this and then pull this up as needed. Uh, property is located in the agricultural and general use districts A two per section six oh three point zero five, excuse me, six oh three point zero three dash fifteen of the County of Rockbridge Land Development Regulations. Uh, a, a uh campground slash private seasonal camps are used by special exception uh in the A two district. The property is owned by Daniel P., Daniel B. and John T. Mays. It is located on the south side of Gilmore's Mill Road. Uh, Gilmore's Mill Road is further identified as Route seven oh eight along the James River, approximately point seven three miles uh east of the intersection of Gilmore's Mill Road and Schaefer Lane. Schaefer Lane is further identified as six oh eight. Uh, it's further identified as tax map number one one three dash uh eleven dash four. Property is adjacent to the James River and consists of six point four two acres per tax records. Uh, the owners seek to operate a six-site primitive campground. The property is adjacent to uh the previously approved uh James River Depot Orson Campground that was approved by the board on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty. The property under consideration is a, uh, access by right of way through the property of CSX Railroad and the Orson tracks. The access to the maze track utilizes the same CSX Railroad crossing as the Orson track. Uh, there's additional track to the west that is owned by G., uh, excuse me, WGBV LLC. The WGBV uh parcel also has a right of way through the property owned by CSX Railroad and the Orson tracks. Uh, the railroad crossing is both a civil issue and a land use issue. The civil issues pertain to what access easements over CSX is authorized for. It's understanding a staff that the access easement is for agricultural purposes only. This would be a civil issue between the corresponding landowners. The land use issue pertains to the safety concerns associated with patrons utilizing a non-synchronized railroad crossing. Bear with me here, I'm gonna probably do this the old-fashioned way, if you don't mind. Uh, this section of James River has an engineered flood study and the majority of the maze track is located in the hundred-year flood plain with areas of uh AE zone hatch that is considered floodway along the bank of the river. On January uh eleventh, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission held its public hearing and has recommended approval of a special exception with the following conditions. Uh, number one, substantial compliance with the location of camp sites uh shown on the concept prepared by the applicant titled Site Plan Twin River Primitive Campground. Uh, number two, no campsites within fifty feet of adjacent property. That'd be considered tax map number one one three dash one one dash three. Applicant will obtain a E nine one one address and will install uh signage from Gilmore's Mill Road. Number four, the campground owners are responsible for installing and maintaining signage identifying the western limits of the campground. Number five, users are required to be informed that the campground is within the one hundred year special uh flood hazard area. Campground owners shall close the campground to paddle in customers above six feet, uh, six point zero feet on the USGS James River Buchanan River Gauge. Campground should be closed to drive-in customers above eight uh point zero feet on the same USGS Buchanan James River Gauge. Number six, no motorhomes tow behind campers such as pop-up campers, toy haulers, teardrop trailers, stand-up trailers, et cetera, or other recreational vehicles. Excluding from the recreational vehicles is overland vehicles, uh sprinter transit vans, uh, excuse me, sprinter transit uh camper vans and slide-in truck campers are permitted uh, are, are permitted. Number seven, campground is limited to fifteen vehicles excluding campground management company vehicles and not to exceed fifty people. Number eight, campground owners are responsible for ensuring that the railroad crossing slash stop signage is not obstructed. Number nine, uh, approval contingent upon final V dot Office of Fire and Rescue, Emergency Management and Health Department approvals. Number ten, within twenty-four months of approval of special exception permit uh with Health Department approval and or Building Department approval, three of the six camping spots may be upgraded for, provide for clamp, clamping tents and or wall tents. Additionally, within this timeframe, a bath house may be installed on the property. With that, I'd like to turn the floor over. They do have the, some of the same maps that I was trying to get up here uh in their presentation. So I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Mays uh to review additional details of the application. Yeah, hopefully it works better in the mapping system, but let's see. There you go. Thank you.
Hi there, good evening. Uh, my name's John Mays. My brother Dan Mays were the two owners of Twin River Outfitters from Buchanan, Virginia. Uh, we're here tonight to ask the uh board of supervisors to approve our special exception permit to operate a six-site campground in the Gilmore Mills area of uh, uh, Rockbridge County. Um, here's just a quick overview slide from the GIS system showing the uh, the lot that we're talking about. Couple aerial pictures. It's situated, it's a big grass field, about five acres of grass field, about a, um, an acre wooded along the tree line down to the river uh with about eleven hundred feet of riverfront property with lots of nice beaches people could paddle into. That's the railroad crossing um that people would access. That's a view looking down the eleven hundred feet. Uh, the property uh is on river left. Uh, as you look down that stream, that's the property that we own and are looking to have people be able to paddle in. Uh, the site plan, I think you should have documents there that kind of show a picture of the site plan. Uh, the uh, the Orson family already owns a, um, and operates a, a campground. Uh, that's, I think, five sites, five, five or six sites. It's advertised through Hip Camp. It's open to the general public where they can book sites. We're just uh, uh, I bought the property right next to, to their um, uh, campground. And we're gonna, we'd look to operate five sites kind of in the tree line or six different sites along the tree line with the ability to overtime upgrade uh within the first two years, three of them to glamping or wall tent style uh structures that we found to be pretty popular with our business model. Um, just real quick about our company, uh, our, actually corporate legal name is James River Basin Canoe Livery. Started in Rockbridge County, operated out of the old coffee pot building for, for many years. Um, my brother and I bought the business and relocated it um after a few years to uh Bodatack County where we were able to get riverfront land and then have been there for the last eighteen years and kind of growing. We do canoe and kayaking tubing and rafting. Um, and so it's, it's, it's been doing pretty well. Uh, this last year in twenty twenty-two, we had fifteen thousand customers um of which nineteen hundred of them did multi-day paddle trips. So they would, we have a network of uh three different campgrounds. Um, so we do um day trips for canoeing and kayaking and tubing, multi-day overnight trips. This is why we're, we bought this property to add to our multi-day trip experience. Uh, we do the river tubing and then we have in Bodatack County, three zone campgrounds already. Uh, where they're about fifteen, sixteen miles apart where people can, we can take them up, launch them, they can then paddle into a campground camp from the river and then launch the next day and keep going downstream. This, uh, this property that we purchased in Rockbridge County is about fifteen miles downstream and will allow us to continue that multi-day river trip experience. We're not looking to be a open-for-the-public campground. But like ninety-five percent of our customers that would use this property would be, have booked a river trip with us, not as an open campground. So that's, I mean, uh, we have some school groups that use it as a, as a, so we don't want to not be able to ever do open, be open to the public, but ninety, ninety-five percent of our business is paddling, doing a multi-day trip with Twin River Outfitters. So we don't think it's really going to compete with the Orsons uh that are right next door. Um, the where the property's located, it's just kind of, it's very strategic. Uh, it's, you know, where, where it's located upstream of the uh, the new uh proposed property. There is uh four miles upstream, nine miles and fifteen miles. There's boat landing, so you, gives you a four mile, a nine mile or fifteen mile float down into the campground. And then leaving from the campground, you can float six miles and get to Glasgow boat landing takeout and then ten and a half miles, you can get down to the Snowden takeout. Um, uh, so it, it's kind of right in the middle and it's kind of, so it, it's very strategic for our business. And this is, uh, we've kind of curated a niche in the multi-day river trips in the mid-Atlantic states. And it's, it's kind of become very popular. It's, it's kind of a part of the water trail. It's, it's really, it's, it's a neat thing uh that gives people a neat, neat experience in this region. Uh, just some pictures of the wall tents that we'd be putting up. These are ones that we have in some of our other campgrounds. It's just uh, as you, as you paddle in a canoe or kayak to go into a site that already has tents set up, we just found to be very convenient uh having camp furniture and stuff, tables, uh, Adirondack chairs and stuff already set up. It just makes for an, an interesting two or three day uh kind of wilderness experience. Uh, all accessible from the river here. Uh, this campground uh has already been perked for a um, a septic field. Um, we already think it's high enough elevation-wise where, or unlike our other campgrounds, we actually think we'd be able to do a, uh, event in the first two years of a septic system um and water and pot, and well, where we could actually have flushing toilets and showers. But there are other campgrounds, we have porta potties. We would use porta potties initially. Um, we, we follow the annual, we have to get annually inspected by the Health Department for all the campgrounds, but in this property, we did also ask for the uh, uh, to be included in the zoning uh be able to do uh bathrooms, which would be a nice addition to our current mix. Um, we are fine with all the, the uh, it did pass the planning commission level and had the conditions, were, were good with all the conditions that were written. Okay, happy to answer any questions if you guys have.
Do you, do you plan on keeping the tree line, the, the buffer?
There's some dead, dead trees that are going to have to be removed. We're gonna have to do some site clearing. For the most part, it, it's a very, it's almost some of the highest portion of the property line is in the uh, in, in the tree canopy. So we'll put the sites right inside the tree line off to the, um, so that in the hot sun and so people don't want to camp in a big field. They want to camp in the tree line where it's shady.
Has the site for the bathroom been already chosen or would that come later?
I mean, the first year it'll be porta potties, which is, yeah, it's just the way that we, we have to operate and, but, and then in, in the bathrooms will probably have to be located in the field. It'll be probably the highest geographic point on the property for flood um zone conditions or you have to have it the tallest part of the property.
Correct.
Have you, you'll have to use the entrance or the crossing at the Orson property? So you've worked out some sort of right of way through their property?
Yeah, the survey plan, I mean, it, it's, uh, it includes, it's already deeded access that all, there's five lots on the other side of the river tracks. All five share the same. And then all five lots have a fifty-foot right of way across the front of them to get into each uh of the other lots. And we've already been in communication with the, the other four landowners. And I think in this instance, we'll actually have to come up with a named private road and already working with the county GIS department if it gets approved here tonight, that be a private road name over and then uh so everybody can have the E nine one one address.
That, that was gonna be my next point, that, you know, how to distinguish the different properties there.
Yeah, it'll be, yeah. We've already, I think it was uh Daniel Grimm who was from the E nine one one office. We've been talking to him already.
Okay. And, and Chris, do you know if there's been any issues with that railroad crossing?
Uh, none, none that I've been made aware of.
I haven't heard of any, I just didn't know.
With the railroad crossing itself?
Yes.
Yes. And so, so this is back up and running. I apologize, just a few, few follow-up uh items. Um, the existing uh, existing access to, to the, all sites on this side of the railroad tracks, if you will, is located, uh, let me put my hand uh, so it's a little bit better. This is Gilmore's Mill Road, of course, running back to Natural Bridge Station. That way, the existing road uh site access road is here. And then this was Orson Track, Orson Track, Orson Track. This is the Maze Track, again, consisting of six point four two acres. The other LLC uh I was trying to reference is WGBV LLC. That track is located here. Uh, I would like to mention, obviously, that the, any, any type of construction uh as simply been a wall platform and, and definitely the, the, all, any structures would have to be located out of the floodway. Now, we do allow for camping overnight, pitching a tent type thing. Uh, but any wall tents, well, you could do a wall tent on, on the ground, but any type of platform or bathhouse or, or glamping tent with a platform would have to be located outside of the floodway. Uh, if that's still up and going, uh, the difference between the floodway and the flood fringe in this case is located here. So I think we were talking about the highest point. It does narrow down. So what we're looking at here is this is the James River uh flowing this way and then the zone X, uh, excuse me, the zone AE is twofold here is one is the yellow hatched area. That is considered the floodway. That's a no build zone. Uh, you, we, we actually can do recreational structures. I believe this going off the cuff, but I think we can do recreational structures by special exception. Uh, so that is a, that is a process we could explore in the future, but then also uh the purple zone here is zone AE unhatched. Both of those equal the hundred-year flood plain. So you have river uh floodway, which is a hundred-year flood plain and the, in the hatched area. The purple hundred-year flood plain, which in this case is flood uh AE unhatch, which is not flood plain. And then finally, as you work towards Gilmore Road, uh, this brown area here is the X five hundred. There's no building restrictions, no, or there's no building restrictions in the X five hundred.
So you said most people aren't driving in, they're floating in.
Right, well, they're doing a river trip with us. So some of our customers could meet here to start their multi-day river trip and then we would take them up river. They would do a two-day trip and end here and.
Okay, so.
We, we do envision that a lot of our trips would, would potentially end Snowden or Glasgow, so they wouldn't even have their cars there at all.
Well, stock share, but if needed, I can bring that back up.
Did, not necessarily to this, but just in general, in, in a flood area like that, uh, obviously you can't have a structure on the ground, but can you elevate a structure?
Uh, and the, the floodway is the most, and I can bring this back up, the, the floodway for discussion purposes uh is the most restrictive category and we do, I have to pull this up. uh, is the most restrictive category and we do, I have to pull this up, but I'm pretty confident we can do an agricultural building or structure for reg rate, recreational purpose by special exception. Very rarely, in the twenty years I've been here, I think we've done, uh, approximately two or three of those along South River, bona fide structure in the floodway. Now, when you get into the purple zone here, it's still the hundred year flood plain, but that is a buildable flood plain without any, uh, wi- without any special exception process, I should say. There's certainly building department standards that if it was a house, it would be required to be elevated properly. Elevating properly is one foot above the hundred year flood plain.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else you had to brought to the board? Thank you very much. Um, any other questions for Mr. Sladen or? Okay, at this point, we're having a public hearing. Is anyone signed up wishing to address the board?
Uh, no one signed up.
Is anyone online wishing to address the board?
I'm gonna say no. No hands raised.
Okay. Anyone in attendance didn't have the opportunity to sign up? Okay, at this point we'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion.
Move to approve.
All right, a motion to approve is our second.
Second.
All right, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Chair Vergey as well. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have amendments to chapter fourteen of the County Code for Fire and Emergency Management. Chief Ramsey?
Yep, it's, it's been paused. It's always paused. That, that, it doesn't make me see live YouTube. That's what we're. Thank you though.
Just wanted to make sure we're there. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, again, uh, coming back for the public hearing, uh, as a recap, back in September, uh, the Public Safety Committee, uh, was, was presented a, uh, concern regarding non-emergent transports within the county. And, um, the thought was that they were limited, uh, to, to provide life-saving treatments and care if needed or, or the situation presented itself. While the, the code did allow for that, um, we thought that meeting after meeting with the public safety and county administration, we thought that we could simplify the language a little bit, um, that would aid in, in, uh, understanding and, and more appropriately, uh, providing the language, uh, for, for these non-emergent EMS agencies. Uh, should they coincidentally come up on a murder vehicle accident or something like that, that they would need to render aid? A couple, one other thing, um, uh, with that language is that we are, uh, proposing to, to change the designated authority from the county to the fire rescue chief um, to request a service from, from a private, uh, private ambulance, um, or emergency medical service vehicle if needed uh, during a specific time. Uh, we have, uh, as mentioned, presented this to, uh, uh, Public Safety Committee, which they've approved to, to bring forward to the full board as well as Ms. Huffman has, has reviewed and provided that language in, uh, in the, uh, chapter fourteen of the code as well.
Three questions? Chief Ramsey, all right. Thank you, Chief Ramsey. At this point we will open up public hearings. Is anyone signed up wishing to address the board? Is anyone online wishing to address the board?
Yes, sir.
Anyone in attendance didn't have the opportunity to sign up? All right, at this point we will close the public hearing. Uh, any other discussion or is our motion to approve?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All right, Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
And Chair Vergey as well. Thank you, Chief Ramsey. All right, now we need to go back to item thirteen. Comprehensive Plan Committee. Since our last meeting, well, first let me add, is there anyone? Any of you who would love to do it?
Well, I, I did volunteer, I think at our
Yeah.
retreat.
Could I, could I interject a second? Uh, I just want to make clear, I, we're, we're looking for an opportunity here. I talked with Mr. Sladen today and, and in the past as well. The, the pressing, the pressing need is to, is to get two members of the board on a, on a committee uh, to join potentially with two members. I mean, the plan, the plan would be to join the two members of the Planning Commission uh, to discuss, um, updated the comprehensive plan in, in more detail, similar to, to your other board uh, committees such as finance, gets in more depth, fire and rescue, solid waste, et cetera. And then share it back with the rest of the board and have a good communication there and also join it with the Planning Commission. The idea though is, is even after that short term, and when I say short term, it's more midterm, basically two thousand twenty-three till the update of the comprehensive plan is complete um, to consider keeping that going. So we have a, a good link between that department, uh, Office of Community Development and the board and the Planning Commission. Uh, sometimes, um, it feels like we, we would be better served to have that link and be able to bounce some ideas off, especially as we get into LDR updates, land development regulations and county code. There are certain pieces of our, of our development code that, that clearly need to be updated and over time it would be good to have that group. So I just want to make sure that you are aware, uh, the full extent of what we're asking.
Or Mr. Sladen, did I miss anything?
Trying to talk me out of it.
Well, let's, let's change from Comprehensive Plan Committee to Community Development Committee. How's that?
That's why I wanted to.
Okay.
And, uh, I did, Mr. Lewis did reach out to me today. He said that if, if nobody else wanted to serve, he'd be happy to, but you know, he, he wanted everybody here to have the opportunity as well. So.
I'd be glad, I'd be glad to be on.
All right.
Okay.
So Ms. Ayers and Mr. Lyons, that are you, Mr. Day? They serve on? That sounds good to me. Uh, so we'll appoint Supervisor Ayers and Supervisor Lyons to the Community Development Committee. All right. Any other board comments?
Yes, sir. Uh, I'd like to recognize the reporter with the, uh, from W and L is here tonight with Rockbridge Reports, right? So Emma will be covering our government meetings. You saw her at the, uh, school board meeting the other day and uh, I'm sure she'll be reaching out when she has questions. Please be as cooperative as you can. She, she doesn't bite and she, uh, is very accommodating and doesn't wait till the last minute. So. Welcome, Emma.
Welcome. Anything else you have, Ms. Ms. Ayers, you have anything?
Nope, I think I'm.
Mr. Day? Mr. Suter, myself, man, you have anything?
Heck no.
All right, all right. Well, at this point we will, uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
And second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Lyons, Ms. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And Chair Vergey as well. Thank you everyone for attending. Please be safe, travel home.